Good evening, Councilman Sarmiento Najarredro Powell here. And given that we don't have a chair, we just drew straws here. And I'll be chairing our meeting this morning or this afternoon. I'll call on the meeting order. And we want to go ahead and when we get to these items, item one, item three, Councilwoman Martinez is ill, not able to join us tonight. So we're going to pass on those two items, one and three, to the next meeting. But let's want to see if we have any members of the public that were had expressed interest in addressing the committee. Any requests to speak? Any speaker cards submitted? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and take on again item number one. We're going to continue. Item number two is the meeting schedule.
Stretch off with the second Monday of every year.
Councilman Sarmiento, any comments?
You know, I'm okay with it right now. Obviously, it's these meeting schedules are always fluid. So as, you know, just so we can keep on a sort of a rhythm, I'll go ahead and move those tentative.
I'll second that. And we've discussed with some of our citizens, I believe, and I imagine Councilwoman has already has also had an opportunity. So we'll go ahead and approve, back affirmation, those dates. And if we need to review those at a future time, we will go ahead and do that. Again, item number three, moving right along, we will go ahead and continue this item. There will likely be additional, more extended conversation. I want to make sure that we have provide the bylaws copy of these. If you can actually electronically provide them to each of the members of the committee and give Councilwoman Martinez an opportunity to provide input and review as well. Then we'll go ahead and move on to item number four. So, Mr. Gutierrez, you have this item.
Thank you, Councilmember Benavides, Councilmember Sarmiento. I wanted to take today the opportunity to present the new auditors for the city of Santa Ana. As I indicated at the last council meeting, we issued a request for proposal for auditing services and we selected White Nelson Dale and Evans. And today, I'm going to have an opportunity for them to present their firm. And then, along with that, Sergio Vidal is going to do the presentation on the single audit, which was just completed as well. And that covers the federal grant program. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Nitin Patel, who's a partner with White Nelson and Evans, and also Daphne Munoz, who's sitting in the back, is also here. But I would, you know, this is an opportunity, since he will be interacting with them in future years, for them to present their firm and who they are.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. I just noticed there is a good size packet here. Want to make sure we're going to be have a higher level review, overview, and not necessarily...
That's the intent.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, in hearing that, I'm quite sure they'll understand to move a little bit quickly.
Thank you. I just know it can be quite involved and can be here for a good amount of time. I think later on in the agenda, there's probably going to be an item that will have a more involved conversation as well. So I want to make sure we have enough time for everything. So, thank you, Mr. Patel.
Good afternoon. Again, Nitin Patel, a partner with White Nelson and D. Evans. And I'm going to cover real briefly, firm background, scope of services, management responsibilities, the auditor's responsibilities, discuss our auditors' opinions and reports, and finally, certain communication to those in charge of governance. White Nelson D. Evans is a large regional firm. White Nelson was originally established 48, D. Evans, 1920s. Our firm specializes in audits of cities, special districts, and JPAs. And we provided audit services to 43 cities over the past year. And the audit is staff from our Irvine office, which has 47 employees in the audit department. The scope of our services, including doing the CAFR, giving an opinion on that, the audit of federal grant programs, AQMD audit, GAN limit review, a review of investment policies, preparation of state controllers reports. We've completed those and in progress is the Section 8 voucher program, FDS certification. Management is responsible for preparing true, current, and accurate financial statements, develop and maintain internal controls, and adopt sound accounting policies. Auditor is responsible for expressing an opinion, review and determine if management assertions are accurate, conduct risk assessments, examine information presented in both the financial statements and notes, and finally, assess accounting principles and estimates made. We issued a clean audit opinion, which is also referred to as an unmodified opinion, which includes the city's financial statements and the notes. The management letter is where we would have any findings. There were no material weaknesses reported. We did not report any significant deficiencies. We did not report noncompliance. We did have another matter that we reported on construction in progress. Again, on the single audit, we did not report any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or noncompliance items. And finally, certain communications that are estimates in your financial statements included those that are listed up there, fair value of investments, capital assets, the information related to the PERS and PARs plans, also the accrued liability for the city's OPEP plans, and finally, claims payable liabilities. The adjustments we made were normal. We did not have any disagreements with the city management during the audit. We did request that they give us representations. And finally, we're not aware that they consulted with any other accounting firm-related accounting matters.
So...
Hopefully, that was brief.
I was going to, I was impressed, actually, very impressed. Walked right through it, hit the key points.
Staff, take notes.
Councilman, any questions? You know, a couple of questions I do have, Mr. Gutierrez. How long, how many years, what's the term of our engagement with the firm?
This one is will be for two years, and then we have a follow-up with two, one additional years. If, you know, if they obviously perform satisfactory, we would extend it for two additional years. Typically, we have auditors for five to seven years.
Right, okay. So, and this was then the first of those?
Yes.
Years? Now, I'm interested, curious for the auditor for the firm, the, how long, when did you first start working on this, on the audit here for the city and such? How long was that?
Yeah, we started in June of 2016 for the 2016 fiscal year. We were out here for approximately two weeks, and then we came back in September. We were out here for approximately five weeks with three to four staff. And then, finally, we were here in January for about two to three weeks, completing the single audit. So it's a total of probably eight to nine weeks, and we had anywhere staff from three to four staff out here.
And you did highlight, you mentioned municipalities. That's one of your areas, I'm assuming, of expertise. You work with other cities and other...
Yeah, we audit quite a few cities here in Orange County, very, some of the larger cities. And overall, we do 43, we did 43 cities in 2016.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just real quickly, this is more for staff. How long was the previous auditor with us?
Macias was with us for about, I think, seven years? Seven years. And actually, we retained them that long because they were the experts on the DOF resolution, dissolution, I mean. So that's why we kind of extended their, they were the ones that were actually helping the state at the time.
Okay. So were they replaced because we just, did we open it up and cure?
Yes, yes. The intent is really to get fresh eyes. You never really want to get comfortable with an auditor over time, you know? So usually, we try to bring in a fresh set of eyes into the, into the process. So that's why we kind of tried to limit it.
Where was Macias, where was that firm headquartered?
Newport Beach.
Newport, and, and White and, is it Nelson?
Yeah, White Nelson D. Evans.
Local as well?
Yeah, in Irvine.
Got it, got it. And, you know, as was mentioned, you represent public agencies, other cities, and, you know, I just, I guess this is something that I'd been away from a little bit, so I didn't get much of the background. Funds that are, or fees that we're paying the firm comparable to what we used to pay Macias, or is there, is there disparity in... Good evening, council member.
The fees, I believe, are lower for the, if you compare the last year of Macias versus the current year with White Nelson D. Evans, it's actually lower than what was paid.
Good, good.
And it went through an RFP process as well, pardon me.
Doesn't mean, doesn't mean lower quality, just means more efficient, right?
Yes, more efficient.
There we go, let's see. So, you know, I, it's a pleasure to meet you, welcome, and congratulations. And so, you know, we look forward to working with you. I know that most of the council members, as I do, sit on regional boards and commissions throughout the county. So we're familiar with some of the auditing firms that are out there that audit, you know, the fire authority, or the water district, or the sanitation district. And so every once in a while, we all, I know on those boards, we get a chance to meet with the auditor and get some direct input. So maybe that's something that we can adopt as a practice. I know we haven't done that in the past here often. We started doing it, I think, towards the tail end. But I know it, you know, at the water district, we do that, and, you know, they kind of rotate directors over there and, you know, sit down with the auditor. And just to get, just to get some individual feedback on any issues that may be apparent, not to staff, but to the directors and here, maybe not to staff, but the council members, might not be a bad approach. I'm sure that's one of the best practices that you all probably implement.
Yes, it is. And, and if that, you know, if we want to arrange that, we can do that.
Yeah, we actually had spoken about having a straight individual contact between the council members and the auditor, and to engage that. And, and actually, we're going to do that next year, where previously, what happened was communication went through the city manager. So I think in this case, we're going to be working with our city manager, but we're going to have the opportunity for an independent conversation to be had between council members and the auditor, absent staff.
And that's really healthy, right? I mean, the conversations with the city manager obviously have to continue. But I think, you know, incorporating the council, the individual members is always helpful, and even this committee, you know, when there's an issue. So I'm sure that we're, we'll be happy to, you know, to invite you back when you see that there's an issue, so.
Yeah, and it would be a pleasure. And the more information we get, the better it is for us.
It's always better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, I believe...
Yeah, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sergio. He's going to do a quick overview of the recently completed single audit, which covers federal grants.
Thank you, Francisco. Good evening, council members. This is a single audit presentation for fiscal year 1516 for the city. And just a quick rundown of this presentation of what the single audit encompasses. It's the audit of the federal grants only. It's required for entities that expend $750,000 or more in federal grants in a year. So clearly, the city spent almost, almost $60 million in a year is required to maintain this audit, as discussed by Mr. Patel.
$60 million federal?
57.9, is it?
Federal.
Federal grants, yes. The audit was performed, as Mr. Patel discussed, by White Nelson D. Evans, LLP, and as noted, 57.9 million and 23 grant programs. Now, as it relates to the single audit, the audit objectance is adherence to federal rules and regulation, and to review, test major programs. For the city of, or for 1516, the city's major programs were Section 8 housing, $31.2 million, asset forfeiture, approximately $5.8 million in expenditures that were incurred, and finally, highway planning and construction. Other programs that are not considered major but are encompassed in that, in that 57, approximately $57 million amount, are CDBG, WIA, Public Safety Partnership and Community Police Grants, commonly referred to as COPS grants, and the UAWC. Now, here's a report on the single audit, and this is actually where the financial statement information is presented. And it just, it shows you by category or by agency, the city's expenditures. So, for example, I'll just go real quick on that page, page six of the report, or the report that you have here, the first page is HUD, Housing, Urban Development, HUD. The total expenses for HUD, the majority of the city's expenditures were with this agency, approximately $42 million. Within HUD, that is where you find CDBG program, and Section 8 housing voucher, approximately $31.1 million. Yes?
I do have a question. We know CDBG, that is, those are funds that directed to the city to specifically provide services to residents within the city. Section 8, am I correct in understanding that we manage the funds, however, it isn't necessarily to support housing specifically within the city? Is that right? Can you explain my, if, my understanding, and I know we have just in the room as well, but is that the funds come to the city, but some, but one applies and is able to, somebody who's looking for housing, seeking housing, is able to apply, use that voucher elsewhere, outside of city boundaries? Is that, is that correct?
I believe that is my understanding is.
Yes.
One moment, council member.
Councilmember Benavides, that is a true statement. The entire $31 million is for housing assistance, however, for the city of Santa Ana, however, there is an option of portability or mobility with these vouchers. So they can come into the city of Santa Ana, apply, and if they cannot find a residence within the city of Santa Ana, they can take that voucher to another city that would provide them that housing need.
In this case, we're, it's different from other housing funds, where we actually establish or build or do an acquisition rehab, or we have an affordable, you know, development. In this case, it's more, we're more of a fiscal agent for individuals to use that voucher for housing wherever they're able to, to have that voucher received, right?
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that distinction, that it is the bulk of this, of these funds. But when it comes to actual program in the community, that, that seems to be more scaled, a smaller portion, against CDBG or even some of the other, the home funds. Just wanted to make that, that distinction, that is decent amount of funds, but again, most of it is, is really at the discretion of the, of the person, the recipient. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Great. And the next, the next page here is, again, obviously, the federal government encompasses various federal agencies. The next page here just highlights other, other programs with the city, or that the city has contracted with, or federal agencies, US Department of Labor is a, is a key one here. Not too much, but I think it's a, it's a probably important one, HP job grant, job training grants. Next page is, real important one, is it, given our committee here, is JAG, Just Assistance Grants from the Department of Justice, UAWC. Those are, you know, pretty big components of the, the police department. And finally, this, this here, the final page identifies, let me just get that for you guys. And this final page here, which is page nine of the report, it identifies this $57.9 million of total expenditures. So what that means is what the city incurred for this fiscal year. So the results of the single audit as conducted by the White Nelson D. Evans, no findings. So the city was in compliance with federal regulations in relation to the grant programs. An unmodified audit opinion, what does that mean? It's just a clean opinion that the auditor's provided to the city and their...
Quick question on that $57 million for, this is fiscal year?
2015, June 30 of 2016, so.
Got it. So is that pretty commensurate with what we've received previously? Is it, is it, did it increase? Did it decrease? Where is it in relationship to other years?
And during the fiscal year 2014, 15, the expenditures were about $57 million, so it is commensurate. There might be, in terms of the federal grant award or funding, typically, the city, or I think that was provided, was about $123 million that the city was awarded. And that's to be spent over multiple years, but was actually expended during this current fiscal year, or pardon me, June 30 of 2016 fiscal year, was a $57 million.
And it's common that the bulk of that is going to be Section 8 vouchers?
Traditionally, the city's been a, the bulk of it has been about Section 8.
Yeah, because I know the last three years, I think, we've gotten the maximum amount allocated for UAWC funds at 5.5 million, right, each year? Was it two or three years? I forget. But, you know, I know that when we've gone back, I think we've been successful in advocating for the maximum amount, and I think we received it the last two or three years.
We have been successful with UAWC, as well as the COPS grants, when we go to the feds.
Thanks.
And the UAWC grant, like for, as you bring up, the UAWC grants on page eight of the report, 1.6 million in the two, to two allocations for 2014, 2015 were spent by the city, a total of 1.6 million during the most recently completed fiscal year. And as Mr. Patel noted in his presentation, the city, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies identified during examination of the single audit. This concludes my portion of the presentation. If there were any questions?
Councilman?
So this is going to seem like a very broad, high-level question, but I guess because this is a meet and greet, I can do that with you, Mr. Patel, because, you know, we're just getting to know each other. But, you know, we've, you know, we've had some, some council members believe that the fiscal reality or the fiscal condition of the city isn't what it's been purported to be, right? A lot of times, it's based upon material, concrete findings. Some of it has been more speculative, right? And that's probably part and parcel what you run into, where there's an instinct, or there's, you know, some basis, some rational basis for people feeling that what we're being, what we're being told as members of the council overseeing and being fiduciaries for the funds here, isn't what it appears to be, that there are funds maybe, you know, put away someplace, there are different sources that haven't been disclosed, you know? So, again, you know, I'm sure that this isn't uncommon, but I think whenever there's a moment in time when maybe you have new council members, old council members, maybe a change in staff, that sometimes happens, right? So that's kind of where we are right now. I know that I've heard from conversations on, on the dais, on the dais, from, you know, some council members, where there's been some concern over the accuracy of what our financial health is and what our condition is. To the extent that that's true or not, I'm glad we're doing this, because I'd like to dispel the speculation and be able to come up with some, you know, good findings. I'm glad that your results reflect that, that you haven't seen anything that seems out of the ordinary, that seems like there's maybe lack of disclosure, that there are funds maybe that, you know, aren't accounted for, or maybe there's bad practices that have been in place. So, you know, as you know, well, maybe as you, as you don't know, but we had a city manager in place for three years, for the past three years. Before then, we've had temporary acting city managers, and we have one right now that's doing a good job. Prior to that, we had a city manager for almost 25 years, right? So we've had a different sort of dynamic here in, you know, at the city council for the past few years. So the reason why I offer that context up to you is because the politics always enter into where, where we are on the fiscal health of the city. And what we disclose to the public is really important. So the burden, I guess, that we're placing upon you is a heavy one, so you can justify where we are. And so, to the extent that you do that in an objective, unbiased way, is really going to help us move beyond this question of whether or not things are being done irresponsibly. And I don't think they are. I, I'm one of the believers that we've been extremely careful and diligent these past few years, because we went through a really difficult time during the financial crisis and almost had to declare a Chapter 9 bankruptcy. And so, we've tried to make good, responsible decisions, and I think we have, but there still seems to be doubt in some members' minds, and then that goes into the community as well, and that's not a healthy thing for a city. So in that, you know, I just want you to, you know, I'm glad for these results that you're bringing to us, but, you know, if you continue under that, under that premise that we are still having some concerns by some, that, that things aren't being handled as well as they should be, so to the extent you can, you can identify anything that could be improved, you see things that are flawed, please feel free to, to speak very candidly about those. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman, for his comments. And I think the, ultimately, for members of the council, we are, you know, fiduciaries, we want to make sure that we, that the city is, is being managed well, that our finances are being, you know, everything is above board. And that's why we contract, right, with NADA, to be able to highlight and, and bring that to light. And to Councilman Sarmiento's point earlier, and, and some of the comments that Mr. Gutierrez mentioned, as far as conversation just between the council and the firm, we, we want to be able to both share, but also have candid conversations, because ultimately, we want anything that is, that's not kosher, it's not right to be brought to light. We definitely don't want to have anything, you know, go into the radar. What you're reporting, you know, at, at the end of the day, all of our credibility is on the table, yourself as a firm, you know, you're, you're putting your reputation, you're aligned by saying, this is a clean audit. So with that, you know, there's, there's no reason for us not to, clearly, you, this is a practice your firm has been in existence for, for a couple of years now. Was it back in 1948 or something of that, that sort? So you've, you have a long list of history, credibility, do work for many municipalities. So I think that we can trust that what you're reporting is, is accurate, it's sound. So thank you for your, your report and good work to, to staff, to, for making sure that we are managing things well, that any type of suggestion that that's not the case, clearly, independent third-party auditors is demonstrating that we do have the solid financial standing. Everything is being managed and tracked in a above-the-board manner. So with that, congratulations, good job, staff. We anticipate that this will continue to be the case at the next audit.
Great. Well, thank you, and that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. Given that, item, we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, jail operations revenue. I believe, Mr. Moyn?
Yeah, the chief and I think Robert, the children, he gets through this information and it's important to get a sense of the revenue within the situation. So there's a presentation. Chief, do you start, or do you want to pass it on to?
Sure. You know, in light of the termination of our ICE, Robert Carroll and staff have been working closely with finance to really give that clear picture to the city manager, members of the committee, and the city council, as to what the impact is with the loss of that revenue. So I'll turn it over to Robert.
Great. Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to provide this jail revenue update. Just got a couple of slides here, want to provide that, that high-level overview of the jail revenues. Looking at this slide here, just want to explain, the first column is the description of, of the revenue sources. The original budget column is our original budget for 1617. The third column over is how we're projecting to end the 1617 year. And then the final column to the right is our department projection for 1718.
Mr. Carroll, quick, quick question. Is the, the difference there between the original budget and the fiscal year, how, the forecast for, for current fiscal year, that about $5 million, $5 million change difference, is that due to the sunset of the ICE contract specifically, or are there other factors? Except, that's a pretty significant gap, and if they're not, if they're not ending until, there was a reduction here right at the, in the beginning of the year, but the contract itself won't sunset until, what is it, May, I believe, correct?
Correct. I think.
Yes, it's primarily probably 98, 99% as a result of the ICE contract reduction.
So, and that's the reduction not necessarily, or the reduction, I guess, in addition to, when is it scheduled to terminate?
End of May, I believe.
End of May. So then that's one full month in June, and then there's a reduction for?
Yes, and it's been tailing off. They've been taking detainees out month by month, so it's really tailing off, so we've factored in that decrease each month until the end of May when they're going.
Right now, how many inmates?
Twenty-two detainees.
Yeah, twenty-two. Twenty-two inmates.
The contract goes by bed, right, not by?
There's 64 bed guarantees, so we'll get paid for those 64 beds even if they pull all the detainees out of the facility. So we'll continue to get paid for that until the termination of the agreement.
And?
In terms of actual bodies, we have 22 from ICE actually in the facility.
Okay, I'll let you continue, and then follow up with that, questions. Thank you.
So, we have the PD jail housing rental, which is the big number there on the screen, which everyone's familiar with, but we also have other sources of revenue at the jail. The jail pay-to-stay program and the jail booking fee program, which are relatively new, you'll see that our projection for the jail pay-to-stay program, it's actually done a little bit better than we had anticipated at the beginning of the year. Jail booking fees, we're still trying to get that program up 100% running and increase our revenues there. PD jail facility, I'll go into detail on the next slide. And jail kitchen rental, that is what Aramark pays us when they prepare meals for outside agencies. We get a small percentage of those meals, a small percentage of the cost as a revenue source, and that's decreased a small amount because they've been preparing less meals for outside agencies. Second slide, this goes into a little more detail on the PD jail facility rental. Again, this is our big source of revenue. The second column over, that's our 1617 projection at the beginning of the year. At the beginning of the year, for the ICE agreement, we had 238 detainees. What we do when we project revenue, we take a snapshot in time, and at that point, January, February of 2016, when we took that snapshot, there was 238 detainees. And then from there, we try to anticipate, okay, is there any indication that the population is going to increase or decrease, and then we'll factor that in to the extent that we have any type of preliminary information on that. So you could see for the ICE agreement for next year, we're not anticipating any revenue because that agreement is being terminated. For US Marshals, we're showing a decrease there of about $600,000. And again, that has to do with the snapshot that we take at about this time each year, depending on how many inmates we have at that point in time, we project out for the following year. Bureau of Prisons, we actually are doing a little bit better. I think when we did the, took the snapshot, in 201617, we had 10 Bureau of Prisons inmates, and that's gone up to about 17. So we're showing an increase in that agreement for next year. And then for our small agreements with the cities of Irvine and Fountain Valley, we're showing, you know, they've been a little more successful. They're small revenue sources, but they have been a little bit more successful than we had anticipated at the beginning of the year.
Any reason why you're projecting Tustin to go to zero?
Yeah, we actually, I believe you're at the council meeting, but we actually took an item to council, and it was to renew the Tustin agreement and to add Newport Beach, and that was a 3-3 vote, so it didn't pass. So that's why we are projecting the zero, and then we don't show Newport Beach here as one of our customers.
Yeah, so the difference that we have there between our 1617 projection and our 1718 projections, about $9.3 million. We do also, you know, calculate when we take that snapshot, if there's going to be any projected increase, if we have any preliminary information, we'll factor in what that increase potentially could be. But without the ICE agreement next year, obviously, a big decrease in revenue. That concludes my presentation. Be glad to answer any questions.
Councilman, I have a question, unless you want to start. We, this question perhaps for the acting city manager, maybe police chief. Several months ago, the council voted to put out an RFP for jail reuse study. Can we get an update on where that is in the process?
Sure.
Thank you, council members. The RFQ, we received two proposals for the RFQ response. We performed the initial evaluation and have scored both of the proposals, and at this point, we're working internally with the chief of police and the acting city manager on the next steps in that process. Given now the ICE contract, it may be prudent for us to potentially modify the scope of services that was originally submitted. As you are aware, there was three elements: the jail reuse itself, an alternatives-for-detention component, and a jail conditions component. Alternatives to detention is directly related to the federal ICE detainee program. So with that portion out of it, that may be an opportunity for us to look at potentially modifying the scope slightly, but we're in that process, and we should be on track to bring something to council late April for a contract or early May, unless provided other direction.
It seems to me that, in general, we've been talking about this for some time, what options, opportunities we have. From what I understand, the jail itself has been running a negative revenue-to-expension for some time, right? It's not new. So, there's been a need to figure out how we can, what we should be doing. There's been some discussion about whether, and questions as to whether we should have been, whether we should be in the jail business, especially given that we're subsidizing from general fund. So my thought at this point, it's to expedite and have the reuse study be all-inclusive of any and all options for uses, but rather than, if there's anything we can do to move it along so that we're not necessarily having to wait until April, May to consider something, but looking at something, or end of April, May, but looking at something essentially sooner rather than later would be.
That's a good point. I think we'll do everything we can to see if we can make it. It is something that was started a while ago, and perhaps, as Correa mentioned, there needs to be a little tweaking in the scope to make it a big study. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Because the realities have changed, for example, the 90 days notice that we received and so forth, but I agree with regards to the importance of moving things along, and so I'll work with the team to see if there's anything we can do to bring it back to council sooner than later. And then once it's ordered, of course, in the process begins of the consultants doing the study. So, that also will take its course.
What is the, at this point, estimated time frame as to when we'll actually, could anticipate seeing a result? I don't know if seeing a report and options.
I don't know. Did the proposals kind of, was there a timeline that we?
We had originally outlined about a six-month process. There are some things that we can do. Obviously, if we provide a different scope or a revised expectation to have something done sooner, we can approach whoever the ultimate consultant is about that and bring those options to the mayor and city council for consideration. So that's definitely something that we can do. We can change some of the elements that are in the RFP, or the RFQ in this case, in order to meet those goals, but that's definitely something that's doable.
Another follow-up question I have is, the last meeting, I believe the city manager provided us a report, maybe we discussed it some at the last meeting, but the cost for our portion, well, right now here, we're just looking at revenue, right? There isn't any indication as to cost?
Yes.
I don't know if we have that number, what our annual cost or what our cost will be for 1617 to operate?
Yeah.
And more specifically, what the portion of what the cities use, or booking, and our own detention of any?
The, Christina and chief, I think the question was expense 1617 without ICE? Without ICE, right? It would be the question, I think.
I do have some rough numbers for you. We still have to refine them, but with, without the ICE agreement, approximately 12.5 million. And if it was just a holding facility alone, approximately 7.7 million. And we're still in the process of refining the different tasks that would have to be accomplished within both of those business models, and we may be able to reduce some of the costs once we do that.
So when you say, at this, just that the existing 1617 cost to operate, ICE included at everything, what would that be? Do you have that figured?
It's about 18.4 million.
Okay. Yeah, that's with ICE. Okay.
Correct.
And so without, it's 12.5?
Probably a little bit more because the 12.5 is for staffing costs, so there'd be obviously some.
Food and medical.
Yeah, there'd be some expenses that go away when the ICE contract goes away, but there would still be some additional.
Building maintenance.
Building maintenance, yeah, food, medical.
So, yeah, so there will be an increase in expense from the 12.
Correct.
And that's basically US Marshals and Bureau of Prison and Holding Facility. Holding Facility, that, what does that encompass? By itself, Holding Facility? Yeah. So it's like, what did you say, 7.5?
But you're wondering what the operation? So that would be the booking of both misdemeanors, felonies, and SAMCs when appropriate, so photograph, fingerprinting, taking folks' property, sending the felonies, escorting the felonies over to the Orange County Sheriff's Department, citing and releasing the folks that would be cited and released from our facility, and keeping a drunk tank for those arrested for drunken public, and it would be what you would normally see in most municipalities.
If you house them, they would be housed in the sheriff's department.
Correct.
Okay, so that's kind of your simple, or in its most simple form, what need that?
It's what they consider a Type 1 in the state of California.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so this is complicated, right? I mean, we all realize that we're in a, I think in a position that we shouldn't be in because these contracts that were entered into in 2006 are, you know, at the time, they seemed really good, but at the same time, we realize that they really weren't binding. These are contracts that I think could be rescinded on 90 days' notice by either party. And I do recall that, it was a good point that the council member brought up, in that we had to go back and I believe renegotiate some of the terms of the contract because we were operating at a deficit. The rates were, I think they were like $85 or something.
Yeah, I believe we're at 82, and we negotiated up to 105.
105. So that really helped, and I think it reduced the gap, and I think we were just breaking even at that point. But, you know, I just never understood why we relied on just two anchor tenants, right? And that's where I guess I never could understand why there wasn't maybe an interest, or maybe, you know, why we weren't more motivated to market ourselves as a facility that could house other agencies, or maybe increase the number of beds that the marshals used, or maybe other agencies that might have a need for a Type 1 facility like ours. So, you know, I just, I just never got that, and I think that the reuse may help us with that, but we don't need a reuse study to tell us we have an asset that's not, that's underperforming, right? So I think all of us can agree to that, because what's the number of beds that we have there, chief?
512.
512, right. And with the marshals and ICE at their, at the full extent of their contracts, right around 300 beds, right, were being used, or maybe a little bit more?
I'm not sure what the maximum is.
Was it 120 with both of them?
Highest we've ever had in a contract was 460.
460.
Was that continuous, or was that like a peak?
That was like a 451 period. And that's where ICE opted, it's not 2006, that's where ICE opted to get their own agreement because they were loading five of the marshals over beds.
So that includes ICE?
That includes ICE.
Yeah, but currently, we have US Marshal and Bureau of Prison, how much, how many?
Almost 520.
500?
120.
120 is between US Marshals and Bureau of Prison?
Yeah, and the challenge is with the jail population, you're always going to have flexing, yeah.
Right.
It's the nature of the business, and one of the things with running a municipal Type 2 facility, there's nobody else in the state of California that does that but the city of Santa Ana, so that makes it more challenging. We had approached the state, the Orange County Sheriff's as well, and we weren't able to get any traction with either of those groups for a variety of reasons. So that's where we instituted the pay-to-stay program, the smaller contracts with some of the cities, and just attempts to try to do a better job in marketing ourselves better and getting at least some revenue through some of those programs. But yes, it has been very challenging, and perhaps the reuse study might be able to help us in that area if we decide to stay in that, in the jail business.
So let's just say, you know, you know, just kind of speculating here, or hypothesizing here, let's just say the marshals come back to us tomorrow and send us a letter of cancellation as well, for reasons that have nothing to do with any sort of political environment or anything philosophical. They just say, look, we found a better facility, they're going to be charging us a lower rate, and we want to move. Nothing binds them to stay. What would be, I mean, what's our Plan B on these things, I guess? What were the thoughts there?
Right, well, we have, one of the models would be just a holding facility, which is what is common here in the state of California that municipalities have throughout the state. And at that point, if the marshals were to leave, it would be a policy decision, but you may want to end up canceling the smaller contract with the Bureau of Prisons, because really where you see the economy of scale is if you were to have all the beds filled, then you get that economy of scale. But what happens is, for example, we just have the 18 Bureau of Prisons inmates, and let's say we had them all the same classification so they can be in one mod, then you would have 18 in one mod that holds 64, and you still have to staff it full-time, but then if you have some that are of a different classification, you may have two that would have to be separated out, and then you'd have to have a whole nother mod and staff it, you know, with full-time employees.
The point that, is that for just a holding facility, you, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't need any of the modules, you don't need any of the 512.
Correct.
It's basically where the bottom floor is enough, so the 512 beds in the modules, which is 64 inmates per module, is really only needed for a Type 2 facility. Holding facility would be just a Type 1 facility. And in my talking, I think we're getting ready to be more assertive on US Marshal, but I understand, Christina, you mentioned that they have, in LA, US Marshal has a facility, and they have some empty beds over there, right?
Right.
What, how many did you say, 200?
Approximately 200.
So there's, so we're, those are their facilities, right? Their facilities of 200 empty beds.
Right. So, you know, let me backtrack a little bit. I want to say thanks to staff and Christina for you being here, and chief, for you preparing this, answering questions on this, because it's important. We're going to be, you know, this is probably the beginning of a very long conversation. So thank you all for preparing this and getting this in front of us on short order. Things are going to change. I think it's fluid, not just with us, but with other facilities as well, because my understanding is the county is looking at doing, entering into an agreement with the administration and with ICE. So their beds may be full, especially since ours, you know, we're no longer going to have a binding contract with them. They may incorporate that, you know, lack of space, you know, that they have now in Orange County and may use the county facility. That's my understanding, that they've engaged in conversations.
And Orange County Sheriff's already has a contract, and so many of the inmates, and correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, have actually been transferred to Theo Lacy over in the city of Orange.
And they have capacity, I believe, in even Men Central. I heard that there were like 1,000 beds, or like, I don't know how many beds that they have available, so they certainly have capacity to even increase the existing contract that they have with ICE now. So, and I think a lot of other, you know, So, and I think a lot of other, you know, if the administration is as aggressive as it says it's going to be, they're going to need a lot more beds. So the way I see this as, looking at this on a purely market basis, is that those competitors are going to be saying, well, we'll take that contract. And their beds will be full with ICE detainees, which may free us up to maybe house some of the other populations, right? So, I mean, I'm just thinking about this, like, how do we best position ourselves for, you know, those populations that may not have a place to go? You know, given that some of these other facilities may be willing to enter into contracts with ICE. So that's one, excuse me, that's one. The other one is on this, on the reuse study. Procuring takes a long time, going out to bid takes a very long time. What's the amount that was allocated for the consultant on the reuse?
Originally, it was 50, but it got moved to 100, is that correct?
Correct.
So look, I'm, you know, six months, was it six months to just go through the process of selection?
And final report.
Final report, yeah.
And final report from the consultant?
Final report from the consultant, once, once the agreement is executed, it would be about a six-month process, including interviews with the council. There was a request for two community meetings with community stakeholders, and then to produce a draft and then a final report. That entire duration was six months from the time of award.
From the time of award. What's the projected time for selection?
Did you say April or?
Approximately April.
Optimistically.
Yeah, April, that would be a reasonable amount of time for us to work with our legal department to execute the agreement and work with the selected vendor and our police department because they have to do some background checks in order for them to even enter the facility. So there's some of those logistical components that we could do. But with the mayor and city council's direction, we can definitely work on how we can shorten that time gap.
You know, if there's ever been an eligible reason to go sole source, this would probably be it because these are exigent circumstances, they're not normal conditions. And so I would just beg, you know, the question of my colleagues and that, and staff, is to consider that, given what we're facing. I mean, we could, you know, time is certainly not on our side on this one. And to the extent that we could delegate some of that authority to the city manager and staff to make best recommendations to the council. Look, I don't, I personally, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I certainly wouldn't be opposed in a situation like this. Again, these aren't normal conditions. If we had, you know, the luxury of time, then of course we go through an entire exercise, but.
We'll bring it back with options.
Got it. So, you know, I'm very concerned, obviously, about our employees as well. And what are the numbers there? What are we looking at as far as staff that are going to be impacted?
97?
97 or 96? 97.
That's every, that's from administration to?
Got it, so if those 96, 97, let's just say proportional reduction in that is going to occur as a result of one of our anchor tenants leaving, right? We're still going to need staff for the marshals.
We're still going to need staff. And actually, we're, in terms of proportional reduction, it's not as much as you would see if you were to go down to a holding facility because you're still running the various mods with the various classifications. So where you're saving money is on overtime costs. And then possibly the part-time staff that would no longer be needed. But where you do see the larger savings is if you go down to a holding facility.
Got it, which we don't plan on doing completely because I know that there's conversations. And I know when I was back in Washington last week, I know we spoke with, I spoke with our advocates about having some very, very assertive conversations with the US Marshals to see how that contract can be expanded. And they were open. So there wasn't any, like, hard resistance and saying, you know, we're good, or we want to reduce, or we want to leave. So that is, that was the positive takeback that I came back with. So to the extent that we can have those conversations with them, and I know the city manager, I believe, met on Friday with our advocates or spoke with our lobbyists on Friday. The whole idea is that Washington doesn't make those decisions for the US Marshals, it's the district. So the district really has almost not full authority, but they have authority to make that on behalf of increasing capacity, you know, amending and negotiating new terms of their contracts. So, you know, those are obviously things we can look at. But to the extent that we can, you know, we can get an accurate number or a number on impacted employees, so to the, you know, 97, because we still have mods, we're still going to need staffing there, you know, it's probably not going to be an exact proportional loss to the size of the contract. But there'll be, there certainly will be employees that will be impacted by that reduction. And Mr. City Manager, to the extent that those employees, you know, could be absorbed in other areas, you know, in the city and other departments and other functions, that's something that we need to, you know, make sure we do. But this was helpful for me. I know that there's going to be, you know, ongoing discussions, but I just think, you know, expediting, you know, is really something that we need to do now. And so hopefully that's something that all of us get used to doing. You know, unfortunately, we're going to have, you know, we're going to have time as our enemy on this one. So one last thing. Chief, remember when we went back and we, when we were negotiating these new terms and increasing the rates? I know that there was some mention on the condition of the jail, right? So there was some condition on the medical facilities and the attention that some of the detainees were receiving. What were those? And I don't recall specifically what those were.
Well, we did, we did receive some complaints specifically from the transgender community, and we did look into all the complaints that we received. But we've also since then had numerous inspections and audits within the facility, and we are compliant both with state and federal regulations in terms of the facility. So we don't have any existing outstanding issues related to the treatment or conditions of the facility.
Look, I think, you know, I think it's a well-run, well-operated facility. I think that, you know, any concerns that they had, I think, were addressed and were cured after those conversations. But I think it's not getting to Washington, right? So there, because when I met with Feinstein staff, that was a, that was a concern that their staff had and that they were still under the impression of a condition that wasn't cured. So, and that went to the US Marshals as well, that they still were under the impression that there was some continuing lack of attention for, lack of medical attention for the detainees. So I'm sure we cured it on our end. I just don't think that information has been relayed back effectively to.
And oftentimes what happens, since we are a unique facility in that it is run by municipality, they are city employees, oftentimes there becomes confusion when you talk about these type of facilities with facilities run by private entities. And so I agree with you, we run a great facility, and I think we have remedied all the issues that had been brought up in the past.
We just, I know we've never been our best messenger. We never toot our own horn when we're doing something right, but we need to do that better. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilman, for your comments, questions. And you touched on one that I wanted to address as well and was curious about as to whether there were still needed upgrades if we were to maintain a type 2 facility, that would end up causing an increase in our expenditures. But it sounds like, specifically in the area of medical, I do recall that conversation or that being raised before in a previous visit to DC. But chief, as far as what you're indicating, it's?
Yeah, there's no upgrades that I'm aware of that would be necessary. I think everything's in place. Where the challenge would be, again, would be staffing. Because if you were to get a huge influx of inmates even from the US Marshals, we did have our staff on mandatory overtime, so that's where you are going to see a lot of the savings under today's conditions. But, so we were to get that influx, that would be the trick, is to really manage that effectively and appropriately.
And I would echo just the comment by Councilor Sarmiento's to, the whole idea of a sole source. There are places and times where time is of the essence. And if we have, the key thing is if we have the right vendor, the right consultant, right? We have to have full confidence that the company or vendor that's being recommended is the one that would make sense to use. If there's any question, then, you know, definitely need to go through that full process. But if we know that we have full confidence, bringing some things, some recommendations, as you mentioned, Mr. Moyet, to council as quickly as possible would be important. And I do want to clarify, and hopefully this is the case, that the, within the reuse study, there's been distinction that has been mentioned this evening between type 1 holding facility, which the city would very likely continue to have a need for. And then there's the upstairs, if you will, the type 2, which is the 512 beds. I would imagine, I would hope that within the reuse study, that the question is presented as well, if there, if we were to exclusively maintain holding facility type 1, that what options they would recommend would see for us to be able to do with the other, with the type 2 space or the other. Are there, what other scenarios is the RFQ calling for?
The original scenarios that were called for would be, one, completely eliminate the jail and just a complete reuse of the facility. Another would be to maintain a holding facility, and everything above that would be up for grabs, so to speak. And then to potentially propose a operator-type model or a privatization-type model. And then from there, any other options that the consultant would potentially have, obviously for us not knowing what other options exist, or if there is other contractual abilities with other agencies where they may have pre-existing relationships, that we look at in those scenarios. But with our new reality, we could absolutely adjust that accordingly.
Well, it sounds like what you just described, that's what I remember from reading the RFQ. And so I just wanted to confirm, it seems like it covers the whole, you know, spectrum. So main thing is just expediting it and getting that to us as quickly as possible so we can go ahead and make an informed decision as a, from a policy standpoint, so how we want to proceed. Anything else from, councilman? Anything else from staff on the side of, and I believe that's the last one, right? All right, so any comments?
imparting comments? Well, staff, any comments from you?
I have none. Thank you all for the presentations, I appreciate it.
Thank you, I'm meeting adjourned.